Yes. Um, this is in fact.
No public comments.
Oh, yes, and visa. You have to have a visa though.
If I may have your attention, we will call the September 18th meeting of the Board of Trustees at Tarrant County College District to order, and I welcome all of you. I understand there are no public comments, and so our first order of business is the approval of a resolution of appreciation of Dr. Larry J. Darlage. Many of you were on his campus at his retirement event, and you know that we named Center Corner in his honor. While we were in the corner, they were outside mounting his name, and the chancellor showed him a photo of it. That's how he learned that that was to happen. And we never really approved it at this table. We talked about it in secret, and so it's all going to be legalized tonight. The Board has received several paragraph resolution that, excuse me, I won't read entirely to you, but it praises Dr. Darlage for his 18 years of leadership and his time not only with us here at the district but in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees at the Tarrant County College District meeting in regular session this 18th day of September 2014 in Fort Worth, Texas do express their individual and collective gratitude and respect for Dr. Larry Darlage. And be it further resolved that as a token of this gratitude and respect, it is hereby enacted by the Board of Trustees that the Center Corner of the Northeast Campus Student Center shall henceforth be known as the Larry J. Darlage Center Corner, and that this action shall be entered into the permanent records of the college as evidence of the sincere appreciation accorded by the Board, the administration, faculty, staff, and students of Tarrant County College to Dr. Larry J. Darlage, and is to be signed by each of the trustees. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Mr. Heed, second? Everyone wants to second it. Ms. Winnett, any discussion or objection? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
So be it. Thank you, Dr. Lace. I think you had a hand in drafting that resolution. We know just where to go, and we need things like that. We have a presentation tonight on student access and success and administrative programs and projects. Mrs. Hadley?
And Board members, and good evening to all of you, and thank you so much for being here tonight. We have a very large, feisty, noisy group tonight, so we appreciate your enthusiasm. Sounds like you are about as enthusiastic about being here as I am tonight, so. You're not sure about that, huh? You're not, somebody's not sure about that? That's the way it sounded to me as I came in the room. But Board members, we're very pleased to present to you two presentations tonight. The first one on online advising, to give you an update on that, is going to be Dr. Joy Gates-Black. Dr. Black?
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. Mrs. Appleman, members of the Board, about four years ago, we began to look at ways to create greater services to our students online. And as you'll recall, we have already talked about our online tutoring. That was one of the strategies that we put in place. But we also created an online advising model. So tonight, I've invited Dr. Kimberly Beatty, the Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Success, and she's going to be assisted by Dr. Kandohwa Parent, who's the Director of Counseling and Advising at our Northeast Campus. They're going to come and tell you about our online advising model, and then give you a demonstration of the software that we're using. Dr. Beatty?
Good evening, Chancellor, Ms. Appleman. Board, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share the wonderful things that are happening in student success.
Shelley, I need help.
Oh, okay. Wanted to give you a brief history of why we started the online advising program. As you may be aware, the SACS requires us to have comparable services for online students. And so out of that need, we developed the online advising for our students that are, especially those taking on, oh, nee, nee, online classes. So the initiative was launched in March 2013. We hired four part-time online advisors, and they went through a very comprehensive two-week training where they learned about all of the services at the college and all of the academic services. We partnered with Academic Affairs. We had vice presidents come in and talk about the academic programs and services that we offer, because they're generalists and they have to know everything. They focus on advising, success, and retention for students taking a class online. Now we can go. The components of the program, there are four components. They do case management, very similar to what our advisors do on campus, and then there's the virtual advising that they do. They provide support for e-learning students, and they provide online new student group advisement, better known as our NSGA, and they provide the pre-assessment activity in the online environment. And you, just so you know, the pre-assessment activity is our state-required activity that we provide for all students that are coming in to take the TSIA, the Assessment Test, the Texas Success Initiative Assessment Test. So we like to define what online advising is and what it is not. They assist students with admissions, testing, and registration. They provide them with assistance for services in our student development areas. They help them with educational planning, and they provide personal interpersonal counseling, not counseling, skilled development, because they are not personal or crisis counselors. They don't provide technical support, and they don't provide tutoring. And I couldn't figure out how to make it parallel, but they don't take messages for instructors either. That was one of the other things that we had up there, because they do want to leave instructors' messages sometimes. So I wanted to share with you some of the data. We've had, we've switched systems, and so advising, which encompasses all those components that I described earlier, you can see, starting with the summer, which was the first full term that we had data for, and how the services and the number of students that they have served. In our online new student group advisement, you can see those numbers as well. And this is a good thing, because it pulls students from the campuses and into a virtual environment, because sometimes we have space constraints. The online advising via chat, you see zeros those first two semesters, because we just moved into Blackboard IM, which you're going to see a demonstration of in the middle of the spring, or maybe toward the end of the spring semester. And so the summer, we, just over the summer, using that, we had 341 students. And then the online pre-assessment activity, again, that was a state initiative that came down and didn't start until the spring. And so again, that helps us on the campuses as well. This is a partnership. The TCC Connect staff, Kathy Burks, if you would stand, she's been great support for the project, and she provides us with assistance, and we are using Blackboard Learning Management System, the Instant Messenger, which is through the computer, on the computer, on the desktop. And Kathy provides for us customized reports so that we can get case management for students taking an online class for our online advisors. And we're, we meet monthly to refine this process, because it's still relatively new, and we know it's not perfect. But it's close to perfect. Now we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Parent, who's going to provide us with a demonstration of where it's housed and how it's used. And we're gonna hope that technology.
Oh, sorry. I am very excited to show you about this project, tool that we're using for online advising. It has really been beneficial to have students have access to online advisors in real time, not through email or through phone calls. She's got, he's got, I'm so sorry, technical issues. The way that every student can get access to Blackboard Instant Messaging is through our MyTCC website. So students will go to their account and log in. And they get this account when they first complete an application for admission, so they are able to do this as soon as they actually have an application and they receive their letter that they've been admitted. You'll see on the very front page here that students can click on this, it says "Let's Chat," so they can click on this to download, I'm sorry, it's kind of small, to download the client. And so when they click on it, because they've already logged into MyTCC, all of their information is already pre-populated, so they click on to download, and it's downloaded on their computer in just a matter of minutes. One of the other things that I wanted to point out is once students get into their MyTCC account, there's also a tab here for online academic advising. So if students who are in online classes or e-learning classes, click on that. They also have access to various presentations that are geared directly towards online students. And then again, they see the academic advising message where they can download the client. When students actually log on, the client will be on their computer wherever they are, and they can download on as many computers as they want to. The great thing is, it can log into Blackboard Instant Messaging once they log onto their computer, so it can already be up and open on their computers when they log in. Every student will have a contact list. The classmates button will be for their classroom, but this is, where it says "School," is where we have the online academic advising. And I apologize that it's so small. But this is actually the room in which the advising is actually done. And let me see if I can make it bigger. And so if you see over here, these are, this is actually some of my staff members, so these are, but this is what it would look like if students logged into the system. They're in a virtual waiting room, and so multiple advisors can be online and take students out of this virtual waiting room. One of the things that you can do, if you have more than one or two students waiting, you can use this feature to send them an email, a message that says, that will be right with you. Just in the minute, for time. And so every student would get that message, knowing that there is someone waiting to help them, and we are working on getting to them, and multiple advisors can do that. To advise a student, since Carrie, you saw, I don't, you probably can't see, but she's saying, "I'm having trouble registering for a class," the advisor would click on Carrie's name and promote her into the advising chat room. And then Carrie is, well, you can't really say very well, but Carrie is saying hello. And so in this chat space, I can talk with Carrie and advise her in real time. The good thing is when, when Carrie actually, or the student leaves the chat room, Carrie can see, I can record the conversation, but when Carrie leaves and I take another student in, only, the next student would only be able to see the conversation between that student and myself, even though I can see the previous conversation. I can, the student coming in would only see that. One of the other options is if you have several students, if you wanted to do some sort of group advising, you could also highlight all of them and move them all into an online environment.
Thank you, Dr. Parent. Are there any questions? It is not 24/7, because we have four part-time advisors. What's the last shift?
It's from six to eight, and then from eight to 10 each night. And then again, on Saturday, from one to three.
And we have earlier hours as well. Those were just the evening.
Eleven to three.
We started the first semester with students that were in all, all, all of their classes were online classes. Then we dropped back to the students who had two, at least two, online classes. This semester, we're opening up to all online stu, I mean, all students. But any student has that tab in there when they go into MyTCC. So students have already begun to discover, even though they don't have an online class, that that tab is there and that they can do online academic advising. The other way it's become popular is through our new student group advisement, because when you go into the Counseling Center, you're given the option to sign up for new student group advisement on campus or online. And so then through that relationship in the virtual environment, students have transitioned into online advising as well. I don't have the answer to that question.
We don't need bricks and mortars. We're gonna, everything's gonna be online, and I hope we're moving in that direction.
We're certainly trying to do what we can in the advising area.
Yes, Mrs. Winnett. We had about a 10% increase this year over last. It continues to grow.
Any other questions? Yes, until seven o'clock on most days, and we have weekend services as well. Saturdays, nine to one peak season, we are open on Saturdays and Sundays. The online advising, yes. We, for essence of time, we had a couple of testimonials, but our feedback so far has been good. We're working with institutional research to develop a survey that we would launch to students so that we can get some quantitative data to support what we know from students and from our online advisors. Any other questions?
I'm sure you have everything you need to make this a success, but just in case, is there anything we as a Board can do to help you move this to the next level of excellence?
Well, I'm so glad you asked that. I would certainly take the opportunity to share with you that I think that this is an outstanding service that we're offering students, and we're moving in a direction with our advising, where we want to provide more access to our students through advising. And so getting more staff, because as I said, we have four part-time advisors, through part-time scheduling, we could offer online advising 24/7, to the point that our systems are available. We could align the service, let me put it this way, we could align the service with our systems, so that if a student contacts us at midnight, that we had somebody available, if we had the additional staffing to support that. Counseling, counseling and, counseling and advising, of course, counselors are dealing more with crisis situations, and the more of the personal, higher-level, high-touch services that students require. There are still needs, and, you know, just like you have different learning styles, you have different styles that students need in terms of their services. And so you have a lot of students that will still come in, that will never use online advising, because they need that face-to-face interaction. And then there are also some things that we can't handle, every situation and circumstance in an online environment, in many cases, that initiates the discussion, that initiates the steps that a student needs to take when they come back to the campus, and then there is some follow-up that has to happen still in advising. With our work through Achieving the Dream, we developed a case management system and appreciative, intensive, intrusive advising model with our advisors and all of our students. So that was a big undertaking, and it's been a shift in how we approach students, because we work with them intentionally. They have to see an advisor two times a semester until their, until they complete all of their developmental education, and they become college-ready. And so there's a case management system. Our technical services have been extremely helpful, custom-made a super screen for us. And in that super screen, we have everything that a student has encountered, so that when an advisor is sitting with a student, they can make an intelligent, have an intelligent conversation with them without having to go to this screen, that screen, and this screen, because everything is there. So those are just a few examples of some of the things that we have done to enhance our advising in the last two years.
So if a student signs in off-hours and there's no one on duty, is there some sort of return response when people are back at their desks, or they have to know what the hours?
In terms of the chat system, our Black, we guarantee that they will get a response within 24 hours. On campus, when the offices are closed, the offices are closed, and we don't have a place for them to drop some type of messaging or anything like that.
I encountered a student last night about 7:15 in Trendy River, and she needed counseling right away, so I sent her downstairs. I don't know who I thought was going to be there. I'm gonna control your halls and find her and take her by the hand.
How can you deal with, or how can you handle, if students have similar questions, like, "I'm having difficulty registering," and it might be five students that have that, you know, how, how can you coordinate that so that one, because if one student is asking a question, probably another student would like to answer the same question. It would save time and help them all if they could interact, you know, all together at one time with the advisor.
So in terms of the online advising program, as she was demonstrating over on the right side, they pose their question while they're in the waiting room. So she can, any advisor can drag over those that have similar questions, and, and, you know, you have to be careful to some extent, because there are private circumstances that then emerge, and we don't want students having conversations about, you know, circumstances that aren't anybody else's business. But if those, she's got the screen up there again, if they had the same type of question, she's able to drag them over into the, I'm learning all this technical language, into the chat room, so that they can all talk about the same thing and give them all the same information. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Courtesy of TCC Connect, we've got something to show our appreciation for your continued support, and that may be coming. Thank you so much.
Board members, while she's passing those out, I, I just want to remind you that this is just, I'm reminded, thank you, I'm reminded of that show, and I forgot what it was, Drag Net or something, it's 50 years old. It said, "This is their one million whatever stories in New York," this is just one of them. However that goes, remember that, Tahita? Well, there are thousands of stories at Tarrant County College that are really, really great stories, and this is just one of them. We're really excited about online advising, because we know it does reach our students where they need us. And that's a good thing for them, and a very good thing for us, because the more we can help the students in their places of need, the better off we are. But also, the more we can keep them from having to drive to a campus and staff it that way, it's also, it's much easier to drag an icon in. It's also, it's much easier to drag an icon into a chat room and talk with five or 10 students at the same time than it is to pull up five or 10 chairs in an office and talk with them at the same time. So this is a great program. Thank you, Kim, and thank you.
Thank you.
Condola. And now our next show for this evening is going to be pulled on by, by Dr. Peter Jordan promoting academic excellence to South Campus Film Club. Dr. Jordan, welcome.
Good evening, Chancellor Hadley, members of the board, Ms. Appleman. As you all know, student engagement is a critical dimension of student success. And student involvement in co-curricular activities generally promote much better learning for students as well as persistence and retention and so forth. This evening, we want to share with you what is happening in the South Campus Film Club, how it's shaping student engagement, student learning, and success. And I want to introduce to you students and faculty who are involved with the South Campus Film Club. So allow me to introduce to you faculty mentors, Ms. Molly Floyd, Dr. Natalie Johnson, and Dr. Philip Jenkins. Also with them, we have three students from the Film Club, Maria Cortez, Jorge Martinez, and Nathan Taylor. And I'm gonna bring forward Molly Floyd, who is going to start the presentation.
I cannot believe that I have the opportunity to tell you about the Film Club tonight. Thank you so much, Dr. Jordan. There are so many things I could tell you about it. And as I'm talking, you'll see a lot of photos, hopefully, they're coming up, there we go. You'll see a lot of photos of some of the things we've done. And I won't tell you everything we've done, but I'll tell you about three of the initiatives that we've tried to carry out under Dr. Jordan's direction. Academic success, student engagement, and collaboration with faculty, other students, and with community. Let me start with academic success. First of all, Dr. Rado's office and Dr. Cobb's office have worked with us to help the students be successful. They help us monitor that and check their grade points and those kinds of things. Additionally, Dr. Johnson created a form that we can use when students are in stress so that we can kind of find out, okay, what's going on with your teachers? What do you still need to do? How do you get this, how do you have to get this grade point up? We like for them to have a 3.0, that's what we say they need, but they have to have at least a 2.5. And one of the great things about Film Club is that sometimes in the middle of the night, I'll see on our message board that they're talking to each other about their homework. Or when they're sitting around the office, they'll say, "Oh, my goodness, I have to write my essay." And they say, "Well, who's your teacher?" "Well, here's how you need to write it for that teacher." Or, "Here's where you can get help with those particular math problems." And so they really encourage and help each other out. And I think that's crucial for their academic success. As a result of them doing well, we've had students accepted to multiple colleges with scholarships, some they've transferred to UNT, TCU, OU, Morehouse, UCLA, Tarleton. So they've been accepted in a lot of different places, and we're very, very happy about that. In terms of engagement, if you show up at our door, then we take you into Film Club. Our students, literally, our students range in age from 16 to 65, literally. We have dual enrollment students, we have e-Connect students, and we have on-campus students who are in the Film Club. And they all get along just great. I think one of the things that it's important for them to understand is how to work with and collaborate with other people. And in a mixed group like that, they have lots of opportunities to work with different people. We also think that student engagement is important in terms of helping connect them to the college. And so you'll see things like the Harlem Shake that we did. And, and they've got, the guys have taken their shirts off and written "TCC" across their chest, which I think is fabulous. You'll see that they have worked with each other to, there it is, excellent. We have worked to engage them through films and film sessions like the Zombie Fest. I know zombies may not be the most sophisticated thing, but the students love them. We have a lot of different students who, zombies. A lot of different students who've done some amazing things. Not all of our students are film majors. We have a student named Kiory right now that I'm so thankful to God that she's with us. She's a sociology major, and whenever things need to be organized, Kiory is the one who keeps us organized because film majors are kind of scattered. Then we have Maria and Dave. They're both music majors. And Dave is a fabulous musician, and currently he's composing some movie music for our new zombie movie, some original music. And then Maria, she is a music education and music theory major, and you'll hear from her in just a minute. But she's also very good at editing. And when we got into a crunch point with JMo's scholarship film, Maria was helping us edit it at the last minute. Jamal is another student, and you see him here with the Sahara shirt. The first time Jamal came to Film Club, he couldn't even say a word. He was just so introverted. He didn't say anything for the whole two hours. But then by the end, he was Film Club president. And he was interacting with student services offices with us, for us, and keeping us out of trouble in that way. We have Jorge, who arranged the whole Tarrant County Film Festival for us. We've got Milos, who came to me and said, "Mrs. Floyd, we need to have a fundraiser." And so we did a fundraiser, and all the proceeds went to the American Cancer Society. We've got Veronica, who came to us and became president. And thanks to Dr. Rado's office, we were able to go to UCLA and tour their film department and visit there. And Veronica had never been out of the state of Texas, much less on an airplane. And so that was a lot of fun to see those things happen. So what do we do in Film Club? We do life in Film Club. And while we're making movies and living life, we learn everything that we can about each other, from each other. And then we also like to say thank you. And there are so many people that we would need to thank that it would look like the movie credits at the end of a film if I thanked all of them. But specifically, Dr. Jordan and Dr. Fang, Dr. Dottie, Josh Good, our department chair, Dr. Morrison for her support of us, and of course, Irma Johnson Hadley. Chancellor Johnson Hadley came on a Saturday to the film showcase, Fort Worth Independent Film Showcase, where one of our films had been scholarshiped into that showcase. And she showed up on a Saturday morning to see that particular film, and it meant a world to the students. We're going to show you a minute and 59 seconds of that film right now, and then you'll get to hear briefly and quickly from the students that we have with us tonight.
I'm so happy you changed your mind.
I know. I just needed to let go. This is my night, and I'm not gonna let anybody take that away.
That's my girl.
What are you doing?
Who are you?
Who I am isn't what's important. However, where you're designed.
Firelight, yeah. I got the same feel from your twin in black earlier.
Who are you talking to? Are you drunk already or something?
I'm going inside.
No, no, wait.
Cassie. My name is Innisys. Why are you doing this?
Because this is my night. I'm tired of being punished for something so pointless.
Cassie, you're consciously lost right now. Emotionally hurt, so you're looking for an escape. But you won't find it in boys, drugs, and reckless parties.
Sure I will. Watch me.
Sweet Cassie, there's a plan for you, a greater plan. You just have to believe.
But how, though?
Perhaps it's best if I show you.
Cassie, please, can you come in? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Maria Cortez. I'm the president of the Film Club. This is my third year being in Film Club. Yeah, and I was just kind of a student, you know. Well, what I really like about Film Club is just like the interaction and hanging out with people and actually doing stuff with these people. And we're all kind of, you know, different, and we all want to do different things. But we're all there to, you know, make films and stuff because everybody likes movies who doesn't like movies. But yeah, so I like the student interaction and meeting new people. It's fun. Yeah. That's it. Here's the director of special events.
Hi, I'm George Martinez. I've been the Film Club for about, about three years too. And I joined it just to try and meet different people who were into film because that was my major. My major is film. So I got in there and started meeting different people. Everyone is into different things, everything that comes together to make a film. So we have students who are into music, some that are into graphic design, and then some that are there just to act. So we put our, all our interests together and try and make something. We always, last semester, we put together the Film Festival. And whenever we put together the Film Festival, we brought in students from other campuses too, and some from other schools. So they all got to meet and network together. And that's one of the best parts about the Film Club is just trying to network and meet new people. And also the, meeting people in different, in different places. Like, we went on the trip to the DC Film Festival, which was great because we got to meet directors from England, some directors that entered movies from the Philippines. And we got to talk to some of the producers and get more insight in how the films are made and what goes into, into actually getting it to come all together just to complete the film. I don't know, do you have any questions?
It's nice to hear about your experience. I was curious, and it somewhat goes back to trustee Morrison's question about the equipment you have and the needs that, it sounds like you're doing fundraisers for something. I'm interested in knowing, does TCC provide the software elements for editing and special effects, cameras, lighting, and all the things that you need to be?
Yes, right now, we're still trying to get more equipment. But so far, we have all the editing software. So we have a computer lab where we can edit anything from audio to video and also any type of graphics. And cameras, we, right now, we have two cameras that we use. And we're still trying to get more equipment, like lighting or sound equipment especially. Because as you saw in the video, you could hear all the noise from the wind. So that's one, one of the things we need to get next.
Well, that's great. I appreciate the art form.
Thank you. And this, Nathan?
How y'all doing this evening? Thank you, board trustees, once again, for giving us this opportunity to speak in front of y'all. I'm, this is my second semester with the Film Club. And at first, I really, I was just, at first, I was just looking for just an extracurricular activity to do, just like outside of class one day. So I just went on the blackboard, and I just like read the information on some clubs. And I was like, well, Film Club seems pretty interesting. So I decided to join it, and I think I made a right decision by joining because it is a great experience, and I'm grateful for the opportunity that they gave me. And I continue to be, and I, I mean, I hope I'll be able to be a part of the Film Club in the near future. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank all of you for coming. Someday, we'll see you on the Oscar stage, and we'll say, "We knew them when."
Thank you so much, Ms. Floyd. Another one of those thousands of stories we have to tell at Tarrant County College.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan, for bringing them to us. I would ask approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 18th, 2014. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Ms. Vandergriff, second. Mr. Greenhill, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda, as you received it in your packets, has three items. Consideration and approval of tuition for continuing education courses. Consideration and approval of proposed policy changes to TASB Policy Update 29. And consideration and approval of the reappointment of Mark McLendon to the City of Ulyssia Tax Reinvestment Zone Number Three. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Dr. Morrison, second, advised by Mrs. Vandergriff. Any questions or concerns? Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Committee reports, audit and finance. Mr. Carter?
We, our audit committee has met. We had a body of work that we looked at and gave sort of preliminary approval to. We'll have another session coming up here in a couple of three weeks to look at that. Most of it looks okay. There was one audit item we approved involving an audit of credentialing for adjuncts and so forth that probably has resolved itself and that we may, I may ask the committee to remove from, from audit considerations. Meanwhile, I think we probably need to meet our new auditor at some point along the line. I don't know if he's here or not. Okay, that's basically it for the audit committee. And I'll provide the committee members, or the trustees, with a list of those audit items.
Thank you. The governance committee met to plan and approve the agenda, as you have it before you tonight. Institutional planning, Mrs. Vandergriff?
Yes, the institutional planning committee met this last Tuesday, the 16th. But I will defer our report to our closed session tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The 50th anniversary celebration, Dr. Morrison?
The 50th anniversary Jubilee Celebration Committee also met this week during TCC Week. And we are making great progress defining and refining the plans. And we will be hosting a overall Celebration Committee meeting in early October. Following that time, we'll be making a report to the General Republic. Thank you.
Thank you. No action is required on any of the committee reports. So we'll move to item number 10, presentation requests for approval for expansion of Foreign Trade Zone 168 Site 5 at Mercantile Center. Mr. McLendon?
Madam Chancellor, Madam Chairman, trustees, good evening. Mr. Terry Parent, the vice chairman of the Metroplex International Trade Development Company, representing the Dallas Foreign Trade Zone 168, is here to request concurrence of Tarrant County College District for the expansion of their current Foreign Trade Zone 5 at Mercantile Center Business Park. At the request of the landowners of Mercantile Partners LP, are preparing a formal application for the expansion to be filed with the Foreign Trade Zones. The district is being asked to recommend to issue a letter stating no objection to the expansion of an existing Foreign Trade Zone, subzone, to service the future businesses located at this Foreign Trade Zone at the Mercantile Center. And all other tax entities in Tarrant County have signed a letter. Mr. Parent would like to present to the board the benefit and its foreign trade zones to the area.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
I haven't seen you in ages.
It's been a long time.
It has been a long time. I saw you coming back. I said, "I know that person from somewhere."
Those humble public servants fade gracefully.
Yes, we do, don't we?
I know we don't deal with Foreign Trade Zone matters often, so I thought we might start with some basics on the program. It is a federal program. It's administered by the US Department of Commerce. The Foreign Trade Zones Board actually identifies the sites that will have Foreign Trade Zone privilege. And then the commercial activity in those activated sites is regulated by Customs. The Congress created those zones, the zone program, to stimulate trade. And particularly, it'll let companies located in the United States compete more effectively with others in global trade centers. And the benefit would be increased employment and... And this, the benefit would be increased employment and investment in the United States. And it's not always the low-end jobs, the warehousing jobs, for instance, in Centerport, which is one of our sites just south of DFW Airport. There's a Swiss company that has been recruiting and training now 200 of the finest watchmakers and craftsmen, uh, serving all of the Americas. The Foreign Trade Zone designation can also affect local agency tax collections. And you, your taxes are generated in a number of ways. Real property taxes, which are not impacted at all by Foreign Trade Zone designation, and personal property taxes. And they are impacted to the extent that inventory that's Foreign Trade Zone designated, which means it must be coming in, imported from outside the United States, or goods destined for outside, for export to beyond our shores. The, that narrow definition of inventory is exempt from all taxation because it's not actually in the United States commercial stream. This is different from, uh, the free, free port exemption. I'm here to, as Mr. McLendon mentioned, ask for your support and your, of your concurrence for an application we will file on behalf of Mercantile Partners, the landowner, to expand the boundaries of our Site Five. That process, the, the federal process for the application requires that we get the concurrence of the taxing jurisdictions locally, and we are in the process of doing that. We've gotten letters of support from the City of Fort Worth, Houghton City, Birdville ISD, Glumont Saginaw ISD, and Tarrant County. You are the last stop on that, on that path. Foreign Trade Zone 168 was established in 1990 with the support of the cities of Dallas and Fort Worth. We are one of four in the region. You've heard from others, I think. DFW Airport has a Foreign Trade Zone. There's a Foreign Trade Zone in Midlothian that serves GM and Mazda auto business. There's our Foreign Trade Zone, as well as the Alliance Corporate Foreign Trade Zone. Within Foreign Trade Zone 168, we have nine sites, of which Mercantile Center is the one we want to talk to you about tonight. Four of those sites are in Tarrant County. Next, please. So Site Five, uh, at Mercantile Center, had, is a 1,200 acre business park. And in 1995, we established a Foreign Trade Zone there and encompassed, asked for approval of 630 acres of the 1,200 existing acres. Uh, it's our intent to expand the boundaries of that Foreign Trade Zone. I'm, thank you. Uh, expand the boundaries to the, almost the entire business park. And the intent is to attract future tenant and user development. Among the benefits it will accrue to all of us, it will enhance the competitiveness of our region. It will create opportunities for new international investment and trade. And, uh, it will create a better local option for Foreign Trade Zone projects. Next, please. Mer, just to get you oriented, Mercantile Center is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of I-35 and Loop 82. Next, please. The, uh, the id, area identified in red is the proposed boundary. The yellow is the, is approximation of the existing 630 acre boundary. Next, please. Mercantile Partners has given me some license to promote them. So you know them as a, really a premier office park with, uh, high-end commercial resident, I have not resident office and industrial development and fine architectural buildings as well. Next, please. And the addresses in that neighborhood are well-known to you. Next, please. So there, there will be impacts for the, from the expansion of Site Five. Uh, we've talked about the inventory tax, uh, which, uh, applies only to qualified merchandise. Um, you'll be happy to know that there'll be zero impact on, on your budget. There's, there are, uh, no, there's no, no impact on the tax rules. Among the 37 companies that are in the expanded area of, uh, Site Five, uh, there are no potential Foreign Trade Zone users. Uh, all of your, all of the business inventory and the real property taxes remain unaffected. Positive impact will be that our economic development organizations throughout the region will have more quality choices to, to attract new business in Dallas and Tarrant County. And, uh, Mercantile Center will improve its competitive posture inside of Tarrant County. Next, please. Mr. McLendon and I have been working on ways that we might be a better partner with you. And we've come up with a plan that we think will work. Uh, we will be promoting the programs that you have that are, are potential resources for our, uh, current FTZ users, prospective FTZ users. And we'll act, we'll act as a gateway for those people that are knocking on our door. We can point them to the resources you all have. It's our intent to distribute useful information that can impact their, the workforce of the existing tenants in our Foreign Trade Zones. And we're going to work with, uh, your staff to explore opportunities for student internships, full-time and part-time employment as part of our commitment. Uh, that is the extent of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
How does a Foreign Trade Zone differ from a Free Port?
Uh, it's a, it's a term of art. The Free Port is what they're known as outside of the United States and in the US they call Foreign Trade Zones.
Other questions? Motion to approve the request?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Morrison. Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Before you leave the podium.
No, I'm not.
Well, he, he saw me wanting to open my mouth. Uh, I'll just suggest one more thing. I'm sorry.
I said, "Here it comes."
Here it comes. Yeah, I'm suggesting one more thing for you to consider, and that is to make sure that in your promotion of Tarrant County College, you let all of your companies know that we also have a Tarrant County College Foundation. And many of them may very well be interested in investing in our students and in your economy through that foundation. Thank you.
Is the Gorley family still involved?
Yes, ma'am.
They actually have a, um, scholarship, uh, here, several scholarships, um, actually through the Financial Aid Office, but, and we are very appreciative of that.
We'll make sure people outside the family understand the foundation.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Item number 11, consideration and approval of final deductive change order with BaseCom Inc. for construction of Math Emporium at Trinity River Campus. Ms. Petty?
Good evening Chancellor, Madam President and Board Trustees. I always love starting my section with two deductive change orders.
We do too.
I, actually, I was trying to think that in the last five years, I'm not sure we've had any change orders that have been anything but deductive. So that's a good thing. So, uh, the first one is number 11, which is a change order for Trinity River Campus for the Math Emporium work that we just did there. And it's for $34,498.63 from BaseCom. And we'd appreciate you approving that so we can spend it on student success.
Motion to approve? Mr. Heed, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number 12 is for, um, our Center of Excellence. Many of you might have been in, or in the audience tonight, might have been at our ribbon cutting yesterday up at, uh, the Center of Excellence for, for the Northwest Campus for Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics. And you might have heard our Chancellor talk about our bucket of paint. And we didn't need that much in that bucket of paint. So we're giving back $153,212 for the contract that we had, um, for this. And we're asking you to approve it tonight for, with Burn Construction Services.
Motion to approve? Mr. Heed, seconded by Mr. Carter. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, uh, excuse me, 13?
13 and 14. The next two contracts are for now spending a little money, uh, both at the South Campus. Uh, and both, uh, are involving the two new buildings that are going up there, the Energy Technology Center and, uh, our Early College High School. The first one, item number 13, um, is a big one for $495,088.65 with Texas Refrigeration. And it is a big contract, but it's for a lot of important work that's, uh, for some very old, uh, infrastructure that we're doing in piping. And as you see in the summary, it talks a little bit about the details. There's going to be a new chilled water pump in association with electrical and control work there. And I would, uh, have you note that 40% of this contract is for MWBE and the areas of, um, equipment suppliers that are on that. It's with Texas Refrigeration. We'd appreciate approval for this important work that's going on.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Morrison?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. Any questions? Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14?
Item 14 is again at the South Campus for purchase of emergency power generator, um, with a cooperative agreement with Cummings for $158,142. Uh, this work is required by code, um, for it. And it's for critical communication services in these buildings, uh, all part of the South Campus infrastructure that we're doing for, um, the Energy Technology. And we're asking for approval tonight.
Motion to approve? Mr. Heed, second?
Second.
Ms. Vandergriff, any questions? Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Marshall, consideration and approval of purchase of Oracle Database Application Software.
Um, before I get into the, to the, um, items, I wanted to say thank you to the board. The last two weeks has been, to me, very exciting. Uh, back in my consulting days, I used to start a lot of projects and didn't get to finish too many. Um, but working with Nina's staff, working with the different, uh, ISDs in the district, working with, um, my staff and, uh, Student Services staff, being able to sit at four ribbon cuttings within the span of two weeks is, um, to me, very exciting. All because, um, I saw the genesis of all these per, programs start and finish within a very short timeframe. So, um, that makes me think that I'm working with a lot of excellent people. And in, in reference to excellence, um, I am a Baltimorean, Baltimorean, sometimes people call us. And I just want to make sure that their excellence is, uh, recognized in my little world. So how about themos? They won the American League East the other night, so. You can have, you can only adopt so many teams on your way around the country. Um, I refuse to adopt anything other than my hometown team, so I know you all understand.
Loyalty.
So the, the first item for approval, um, is our, uh, Oracle Database Application Software. This is the software that sits underneath Alution. It's also the software we use to run our data warehouse and software that we use to generate reports. So the data warehouse has been, um, very important to us in the last couple of years with regards to generating information for the CELT and for the SACS accreditation. It's in the amount of $666,950.79.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Dr. Morrison. Questions? Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item up for approval is the purchase of AT&amp;T Inter-Campus Communications. Um, I came to you, uh, early, uh, last year to submit a three-year contract for this. Uh, this is our campus-to-campus internet connections and our internet connections from the campuses on out and also for our long-distance service. This is the second-year payment of the three-year contract in the amount of $565,200.
Motion to approve by, uh, Dr. Morrison, Mr. Heed, I'll let you second it. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number 17.
The next item up for approval is our annual renewal of our blackboard modules of licensing and hosting fees. Uh, this is the software, uh, known as our learning management system. It was demonstrated earlier tonight. Um, the MyTCC Portal uses this software. And, um, the chat messaging, uh, software that you saw tonight is also part of this, uh, agreement. And, uh, that software application license fee and hosting is for $492,751.59.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Vandergriff, seconded by Mr. Carter. Questions? Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Finally, um, is a, uh, request for board approval for the internet services from the Department of Information Resources. The state of Texas has, um, contracted with a number of internet, uh, circuit providers for, uh, circuits that we use as backups. Um, this originally, uh, years ago, was our only internet connection to, from the data center out. And now we use it as our backup connection. And, um, we now, uh, use three different carriers for our internet support. So if any one of them does go down, and it has happened in the last couple of months where one has gone down and we didn't, uh, lose a minute of service because we had a backup in place. Um, this particular circuit is for $108,000 and it connects the data center to the internet.
Motion to approve? Mr. Heed, second?
Second.
Ms. Winnet, questions? Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Monthly financial report, Mr. McLendon?
Good evening. Uh, I want to remind the board that, uh, our finance team under the leadership of Nancy Chang continues to work on our August year-end, and it's going to work till we have our final audit. I know that y'all will be waiting dearly for that. Uh, there will be additional adjustments to the financial as we work towards a preparation of our comprehensive report. And that, I always mention that, as a chancellor does, that's a report that continuously gets awards and has gone through intension all the time. So I'd like to highlight, uh, what does our revenue look like? And if we compare our sales towards budget, we're sitting on 99%, which is a really stellar. It's really stellar to be able to, to get to that percentage, especially in today, to be able to predict. So I think our revenue for the year before adjustments looks pretty good. All right? So now we can look at the other side of the equation, which will be the expenses side. And if we scroll down to your total expenses, okay, all right, there you go. And you'll see that our actually expenses for the year previous to adjustments are sitting on 93%. And that's another very good thing. So we are actually under, so we're 7% under our total expected, uh, expenses. So that, that is another good report that I think everybody should feel very good about. So now we should talk about our cash. All right? Um, as, as you know, in this period of time, we don't receive any more monies from the state or stuff like that. So this is a period of time when we actually expend more money. So we actually spent for the month $18 million, giving us a, uh, a final position of about $234 million is what we are having right now. If you look at our yield on our 13-week, we're sitting on .56. And if you look at our yield on a 26, it's .56 also. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chancellor's report.
Mrs. Affelman and board members, uh, Tim Marshall said, uh, that he was so excited about being able to go to four ribbon cuttings in a week. When I came in, I asked the crowd if you were excit, as excited as I am. I have had fun so many days in the last week singing my "It's a Wonderful Day in the Neighborhood" song. I'm not going to sing it, uh, tonight, but I do want to talk just a moment. And while I'm talking, Shelley, can you put that up when I get ready for it? Can you find it? Um, we started these Big Bang celebrations, I guess, with Southeast Campus, Early College High School in Arlington, in a wonderful facility. And for those of you who haven't seen it, you need to go to Southeast Campus. Dr. Coppola loves to brag about it. He'll be very pleased to show that to you. But it was indeed a wonderful day over there with all those students who were so excited about starting their Early College High School experience. And then a few days later, we were in Everman in their auditorium to cut the ribbon in the largest ribbon-cutting delegation I think I've ever seen. But it was wonderful, uh, to cut the ribbon there to open their Early College High School, which is a different model, a school within a school, with a small number of students who are going to have the opportunity to earn degrees or certificates, uh, in both the Associate of Arts as well as Associate Applied Science degrees, which is something that, uh, Dr. Pfeiffer in particular has wanted to do for quite a long time, is to get those, uh, opportunities for her students. And so we have been able to deliver on that, so that's wonderful. And then to move right along to the Northwest Campus Center of Excellence in Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics. Uh, on yesterday, they're applauding because I got the name right. I, when I get it, I've got it. But, uh, an absolutely wonderful place for our students to learn and for our community to, uh, to use. And then, of course, today. And then, of course, today, on our Northeast Campus, to cut the ribbon, we had two huge pairs of scissors, one of which needed to be sharpened. I think they tried to sharpen that one on velvet, but a red velvet. We had a lot of fun with the students from the Northeast Campus, Brookville Colleville Collegiate High School. And if you, these kind of things don't make you happy. If they don't warm your heart, then we need to talk a little bit, because they are really, really perfect. And so I said that, board members, so that I could remember to say to each one of you just how appreciative I am to have you be so willing to give of your time and your energy and your efforts to help us celebrate these wonderful things that you make available for us. So we really do appreciate it. You're always there, and it is always noticed, and I want you to know just what that means to me and to the rest of the TCC employees, to have your presence there. So thank you so much for that. And now we're going to have a few staff, new staff member introductions. And probably all these people don't feel new anymore, but we still call them new until after they are introduced to the board. The first one up for introduction, of course, is Dr. Joy Gates-Black, and she's going to come now, introduce somebody that we've all gotten to know pretty well by now.
Yes, really.
So this is more of a presentation rather than introduction.
Thank you, Chancellor. Board members, I am pleased to introduce to some and to present, as the chancellor said to others, Dr. Alan Gobin as the new president of Tarrant County College's Northeast Campus. Dr. Gobin comes to TCC after holding a number of prominent positions in higher education in both the university and community college setting. Most recently, he served as senior executive for Community College Partnerships with Western Governors University. While at Western Governors, he also served as the inaugural chancellor of Western Governors University, Missouri. His distinguished career also includes tenure as president of Heartland Community College and Hazard Community and Technical College. As a first-generation college student, Dr. Gobin understands firsthand the impact community colleges can have on the quality of life of its communities and students. This passion for student learning and success has guided his career to this point and led him to Tarrant County College. Dr. Gobin completed a bachelor's degree in history from Iowa State University, a master's degree in school counseling from Drake University, and a doctorate in educational administration from the University of Texas at Austin Community College Leadership Program. Dr. Gobin and his wife Kelly, who I had the pleasure of meeting this morning, enjoy life with three wonderful daughters, Natalie, Riley, and Haley. Please join me in welcoming him again to Tarrant County College.
Thank you so much, Joy, and it's a pleasure to join the team. Chancellor Hadley, Mrs. Appleman, and members of the board, it's a great pleasure to be here. Several of you were at the ribbon-cutting ceremony this morning on Northeast Campus, and I shared a story about our role in helping create the right circumstances for student learning and success. And I really have enjoyed participating in this thrilling moment in Tarrant County College's history, as these ribbon cuttings have happened, and the energy is very high. And this morning, as I was standing up there doing the introduction, I reflected on the fact that there were five board members in attendance, and that's pretty impressive. But I've been to the other ribbon cuttings as well, and as our chancellor has noted, it's pretty impressive to have that kind of support from our board. So thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be here.
Dr. Gobin, before you leave the podium, I have a question for you. If you weren't at the ribbon cutting this morning, you missed our chancellor giving the keynote speech. And at the end of her speech, which was centered around five rules of life, she asked the hundred-plus students who were there if they could.
No, but it is.
No fair. If any of them could repeat the five lessons.
Three. Ask it for three.
Well, and she promised them a prize.
If they could do three.
If they could do three of the five. That's true. And about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen kids stood up, which I thought was really impressive. I mean, these kids were, you know, there with, you know, all of us, and they had really been quiet and listening, and so chancellor had each one, she found the first one who stood up, and she had him introduce himself, and he didn't quite get to three. And then the next one, he didn't quite get. And she, and she wanted them not to say the same one or two that the previous speaker had. We went through about six kids. None of them sat down. They all kept standing. They were the bravest kids I've ever seen. And she kept saying, there's a prize for you if you can get them. Finally, this one young man got through three of them, and she congratulated him, and then she says to him, "Dr. Gobin will give you your prize." And I told him, I said, "You've been ermed." It's sort of like being a pledge, and this is sort of a hazing duty. So tonight I asked him, I said, "Did you come up with a prize?" And I want you all to hear what he did. It's really.
We happen to have a certain number of prizes and awards for things of this nature in the office, and Larry had this all set up, and there were a couple of Kindle fires. And so I presented the young man with a Kindle fire.
Great.
Half of our chancellor and board and the campus, and we're going to, they don't know this yet, so this is news, but we're going to take the other one, and I'm going to present it to the school. So all of the brave students who stood up and tried to answer questions can then check it out and use that tool.
Great, great.
So we thank you very much for your support.
Very good. Always quick on the feet. Mr. McLendon has a person to present, introduce.
Good evening again. It's my pleasure to introduce Nathan Ferguson, who is the director of internal audit for our district. Nathan was appointed director of internal audit on August the 11th. He oversees the planning and the implementation of all internal audits at Tarrant County District. He was born and raised in Huntington, West Virginia. Nathan began his career serving as a senior airman for the United States Air Force and a human resource manager at Charleston Air Force Base in South Carolina. In 2004, he became an accountant for the U.S. Defense Finance and Accounting Services, where he performed general accounting functions and accounting analysis. Nathan later joined the U.S. Department of Education Office Inspector General in Dallas, Texas. There he provided leadership and managed audits, staff on several multi-faceted federal audit projects. Nathan is a licensed certified public accounting, a certified internal auditor, and holds a master's degree in business administration. He is a current member of the Institute of Internal Auditors. Outside his professional career, Nathan enjoys spending time with his wife Trish and his five-year-old daughter Lila in Wiley, Texas. Nathan.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLendon, for that introduction. Chancellor Hadley, Madam President, Appleman, members of the board, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to work here at TCC as the director of internal audit. I look forward to working with management and everybody here to help improve the program operations here at TCC. And again, I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you. I've already talked to him about a job with his wife in Fort Worth so they can get on the right side of the Trinity.
I noticed, Chancellor, that every time I was talking to Nathan, that he would have a black suit with a slightly different cut with it, and so I, "How many black suits do you have?" And he says, "Fourteen."
Wow.
And so I think maybe, you know, if he wants to be a funeral director after, after this, he'll be in good shape. And one of the first things he did, by the way, was discover that we don't actually have an internal audit charter, which is sort of basically the rules that it's set up by, and so he's prepared one for us that, that I see meets the exact precise definition, national standards for internal audits, and that will have to be approved by the entire board, but I'll get you a copy of it.
Thank you. Dr. Morales has the last introductions. Dr. Morales? I'm sorry, Dr. Ferguson, you're next.
Chancellor, Mrs. Appleman, members of the board, I'm so happy to introduce Suzanne Beckett. She's the new director of the library at Trinity River Campus. Her impressive credentials, her work experiences, and her philosophy of service make her a great match for TCC and for our campus. She holds the BA in English from the University of Texas at Arlington and a master's degree in library science from Texas Woman's University. At Texas Woman's, she has taught graduate-level courses on research methods and consumer health information resources entirely online using Blackboard. At UTA, she served on many important committees, especially noteworthy is the Committee on Diversity Inclusion. Her work experiences include five years of managerial responsibility at the St. Paul Medical Center's Health Sciences Library and at UT Southwestern's Medical Center Library. At UTA, beginning in 2002, she held increasingly responsible supervisory positions in the Center for Distance Ed and the Central Library. Let's see, her credentials are good, her experience connect to us, but her philosophy is what sold us, and she was in a very competitive pool. It's just another match, as she said, "What drew me to libraries is my passion for students." Libraries have a unique role in that they are in the position to teach students how to think critically. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Suzanne Beckett.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Ferguson, Chancellor Hadley, Ms. Appleman, and the board. I appreciate very much the honor and the privilege to be able to join TCC. I have heard nothing but good things as a candidate and seeking out a job about the TCC campus and the culture, student success, and I'm very pleased to be able to join you all and help contribute to that through the library services, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chancellor, President Appleman, members of the board. I have the pleasure to introduce Dr. Obregand as vice president of academic outreach and student success. Dr. Gant is an experienced administrator who has spent the last seventeen years dedicating her life to the improvement of student and enrollment services in higher education. She comes to TCC Connect as the former registrar at Tarrant County College Northwest Campus, where she has served for thirteen years. She's also an adjunct instructor in the Behavioral Sciences Department at Northwest. Dr. Gant's experience in higher education began at Southern University at Shreveport, where she served as a counselor in the Trio Educational Talent Search Program in 1996, and later was promoted to director in less than two years. Dr. Gant has extensive experience developing, implementing, and evaluating programs and workshops for non-traditional students, career exploration, study skills, and special populations. Dr. Gant has worked in community colleges and universities in both Texas and Louisiana. Her experience includes several years of successful, progressive responsibilities in enrollment services, dual-credit enrollment, student affairs, academic affairs, counseling, teaching, budget management, managerial experience, and enrollment growth. Dr. Gant obtained her bachelor's and master's degrees from Southern University Agricultural and Mechanical University, and received her doctoral degree in higher education administration from the University of North Texas Denton Campus, where she also served as the executive committee of the Association of Grad students in higher education.
Welcome in your new role.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Morales. Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, and members of the board of trustees, I am so excited to be here this evening, but I would like to say that I started here approximately thirteen to fourteen years ago on the Northwest Campus. I served on the Northwest Campus as registrar, and I really enjoy serving in that role under the leadership of Mr. David Amines and Dr. Joy Gates-Black. But I'm really excited to be in a position now to serve differently in a different population of students with TCC Connect and dual-credit. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work with our counselors, our principals, and superintendents so that we can recruit more high school students to participate in dual enrollment and to give them that opportunity and to kind of enhance some of the things that we've been doing in such a great district. I would also like to say I'm thankful and happy to work for an institution who promotes student success.
I have another member of our staff, a new member to introduce, Dr. Eric Jackson as the vice president of academic affairs. He comes to TCC Connect as the former dean of public services and social and behavioral sciences at Tarrant County College Northwest Campus, number two. In that role, he was responsible for the leadership of two training academies, police and fire, that service over ten thousand students annually. He was also responsible for the leadership of four two-year academic programs, criminal justice, fire technology, environmental technology, and horticulture, and six transfer courses in government, geography, psychology, sociology, history, and social work that had a combined enrollment of seven thousand students. Dr. Jackson holds a Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice from the University of Alaska Fairbanks, a master's degree in criminal justice, and a doctorate in political science from Washington State University in Pullman, Washington. He is a United States Army veteran and served six years as a field artillery specialist and a non-commission officer in military intelligence. During his tenure as an associate professor of criminal justice for Southeast Missouri State University and the University of North Texas in Denton, in Texas, Dr. Jackson published on various topics such as sexual violence, policing after ethnic conflicts, race and policing, restorative justice, and police interagency cooperation. Some of his research can be found in professional journals such as the Journal of Interpersonal Violence, Criminal Justice Studies, a critical journal of crime, law, and society, policing, and international, I'm sorry, an international journal of police strategies and management, international review of victimology, and the Journal of Family Violence. Dr. Jackson is also a co-author on the book titled Crime Victim Rights and Remedies.
Welcome in your new role.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Morales. Good evening, Chancellor. Mrs. Appleman, thank you, and board for having me here again. I just want to say, I really want to thank you for allowing me to serve one more time in a different role, and we look forward to a great deal of success with TCC Connect and working with all the partners and all the Falconian staff throughout the district and throughout the Tarrant County College, or throughout Tarrant County. So once again, thank you, and I appreciate it.
We have so many wonderful things that go on at Tarrant County College, and I'm going to highlight just a very few accolades. And the first one I'm going to start with is a student accolade. Here's some yellow of mine. Thank you. This note comes from Eddie Gallagher, who is the director of TCC Publications, reminding us that just yesterday, the Pacemaker Award for Best College Newspapers included Tarrant County College Collegium as one of eight two-year publications in the nation that are up as finalists for the Pulitzer of the collegiate journalism world. So congratulations to all of them. Absolutely, congratulations. And there are so many others. You want to just stand and represent the whole? Anybody else here with you from the collegiate? So you get to stand up and get all the attention. Also, the College Media Association has announced a finalist for its 2013-14 Pinnacle Awards for Best Student Media. fourteen Pinnacle Awards for Best Student Media in the Nation for both organizations and individuals, and she's pleased to announce that the Collegium is a finalist in three areas, so congratulations again. And then, uh, Kenny Ha- Akost, last year's Editor-in-Chief, is a finalist in the Best Profile category for his story on the young Muslim woman who left her family to escape an honor killing. He is competing against two university students. The Collegium is also a finalist for the best two-year Weekly Newspaper of the Year and Two-Year Website of the Year. And finally, Eddie Gallagher herself will be recognized at that same conference as the distinguished two-year Newspaper Advisor of the Year. So, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Come to the microphone, board member wants to know who you are.
She's the editor of the collegian.
You're the editor this year, right? So, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I started at Tarrant County College in two thousand nine, and I decided to become a journalism major last fall. So, that was when I really kind of got my act together and realized, like, I'm going to need to buckle down and focus. And since then, um, I started off in reporting one, reporting two. I was the Northeast Editor, and this is my third semester with the program, and I'm the Editor-in-Chief now. So, I, when I buckle down, I do well.
Very good. For some of you who may not know, each campus has an editor, and then there's an Editor-in-Chief. And some of you may not remember, we used to have a newspaper alley on all campuses, and we consolidated those campus papers into one. Had a lot of angst when that happened, uh, as you might expect, it was a big change for us, but it's turned out to be an absolutely excellent decision on our part to do that. So, take back all of our accolades to all of your student journalists, as well as to your sponsor, Eddie Gallagher.
Thank you, I will.
And thank you, you're going to be with us all the time.
All the time, yeah.
Uh, there are just a few accolades that I want to call out from the campuses, and I say just a few because it's going to be just a few tonight, but there are two or three I want to mention. Uh, on the Northeast Campus, Patricia Richards, who is an Associate Professor of Photography, had work accepted into Future Identities Bodies, Places, Spaces in a Performance Arts Festival in the city of Venice, Italy. So, that's very, very, uh, prestigious. Uh, on our Northwest Campus, we're very proud. Uh, you met some of these, these students earlier, but we had, uh, the first class of twenty-two firefighters complete the TCC College Credit for Heroes Program, and we are very proud of that program. Uh, on our, um, Northwest Campus, also, I'm going to say that, uh, the students there, through their community garden, provided nearly a hundred pounds of fresh produce to the Tarrant Area Food Bank. That included beans, peas, zucchini, yellow squash, and okra. I needed some of that okra. Yeah, okay. Um, and of course, our South Campus, uh, Dr. Jordan wants to pay, uh, special respect to Professor Rick Stitzel and his merry band, uh, for the encore performers they provided at the Chancellor's Breakfast, and also to thank the, um, faculty and alumni who performed with him, uh, Dr. Charles Overstreet from South Campus, Lou Caffrey from Northeast, Rhonda Cooper was on vocals, Sam Walker on guitar, Ken Edwards on trumpet, Denise Stitzel on trumpet, uh, Tim Ishi on saxophone, and Eric Swanson on trombone. Each summer, he tirelessly takes on that job and puts together a wonderful presentation for us at the breakfast, so let's give him a big round of applause. And this is an interesting one from Southeast. Dr. Jennifer Lawrence, Professor of History, served as an historical expert on the show Gunslingers on the American Heroes Channel, formerly the Military Channel, for the episode focusing on John Wesley Hardin. The episode aired on Sunday, August seventeenth. I hope you have a copy so, so we can look at it later. That would be very good. Um, and of course, keeping up with the times, uh, on Trinity River Campus, we had a whole group of employees, uh, who sat for the ice water challenge. They, they were, they were very, uh, nice. We had, uh, the campus security guard, Tyler Reeves, and we had program coordinator for Surgical Tech, Don Brazil, uh, Director of Health Services, now retired, Woody Kegler, Officer Dennis Pickering, Director of Nursing, Deanne Mitchell, um, as well as Don Holt, Associate Professor of Respiratory Therapy, Michelle Barker, Respiratory Care Program, John Heiser, Associate Professor of Respiratory Therapy, I got that wrong, James Cloick, uh, Respiratory Therapy, John Heiser, Respiratory Care Program. I think they all took that bucket of water challenge because they knew if they got sick, they could take care of each other. That's a good thing. Um, and, and in Dr. Gates-Black area, I want to point out just one thing that I think is really interesting. The Student Financial Aid Services, uh, has developed an instructional video on how to apply for financial aid, and it has been posted on the TCC YouTube site. Uh, we will have the links on the financial aid webpage and links to the video in all email communication so that students can get some direct information, uh, very swiftly. So, thank you, uh, Dr. Gates-Black and David and team for all that wonderful work. I know our students really appreciate that, so thank you. And the final thing that I want, uh, to report to you, uh, is a trip that, uh, three of us are taking tomorrow, you can get back up to that. And I have a handout of this, trustees, for, for all of you. Mr. Gates wakes up over there. He's gonna... He's gonna give it to you. Were you asleep, Reginald? Tarrant County College, absolutely. Tarrant County College was invited to, uh, to, uh, to go to China with the Dallas Fort Worth International Airport Board. Uh, no, we're not taking the slow boat, we're taking the, the jet, the non-stop flight from Dallas Fort Worth to Shanghai. Uh, and on that trip will be, uh, of course, DFW International Airport Board Representatives, uh, staff and board members, uh, as well as the mayor and City of Fort Worth members, as well as, uh, the Dallas Mayor and some, uh, some of his staff, the Fort Worth, uh, Chamber of Commerce, and it's, of course, a foreign trade, uh, trip, and the Forward Chamber of Commerce, as you know, always uses Tarrant County College in its promotional materials when they are trying to entice businesses to come to this area to locate, and they always like to have us there, uh, as a partner. And, but in addition to that, we're not going just to support that partnership, even though it's very important to us, uh, Mark McClenda and Nancy Chang, we're taking Nancy to translate for us. So, we're going to Shanghai, we know we don't have to worry about what people are saying about us and to us and whatever. That Nancy will be there, she can understand all of that. But I've given you, board members, a, a little, um, uh, outline of what we're going to do and why we're doing this. We're also working very closely with, uh, some people in China to recruit students to come to Tarrant County College. As you may know, there are a lot of students in China who do not have an opportunity to attend the universities there. And some of those families are quite wealthy, but there just is no space there, so they're looking at opportunities in this country, and we have come upon an opportunity that we think is a very good one for us to recruit students here at Tarrant County College, give them the first two years of their work, partner with the University of Texas at Arlington for them to go there for the last two years. They are very interested in coming to Tarrant County College. We are taking some materials for them, and it's much more than just propaganda, it's all good stuff that we're going to show them about what we do at Tarrant County College. Uh, we have a pretty tight, uh, itinerary that we're going to do, some of the things we're doing just on our own and other things we're doing, uh, with the group, uh, totally. Perhaps, uh, there is, uh, one of the things that's very interesting to me, well, the first thing that is being hosted on, uh, Sunday evening, uh, is, uh, hosted by Mary Kay. Mary Kay in China. So, it's, it's, that's right, it's, everything is global today, and one of the things that we expect is going to come from this is going to be, uh, and additional opportunities for our students to experience a global, uh, education. You'll recall that our friends from China who came to visit with us about a year and a half ago are also still very interested. A couple of them are hosting us while we're there, and, uh, they still, they have all their MOUs, and we signed all those MOUs, and we were serious about them, but we really haven't been able to do very much with them so far, but we're working on that. So, I want you to have this before we go. So, if you look, if you think about Tuesday night, uh, where we're going to be, you can see that we're going to be meeting with Daniel Wong from Kim Aqua, China, so you can track us that way. I'm taking the Tarrant County College Police Telephone with me because I am told that it's the only telephone one, so we'll be stealing it from you for a little while. Uh, it has all the bells and whistles on it that Nancy, Mark, and I can use to call back here if we need to, so that we don't have to spend a thousand or twelve hundred dollars on telephone calls, so. Our people in Tim's area have been nice enough to outfit it for us, and all we have to do is know how to use it. I, I, I don't even know what kind of phone it is, is it an iPhone? Oh, my, I may not, I have to let Nancy and Mark use that one, I don't know how to use it. But anyway, uh, we're very excited about that. Uh, it's a nine, ten-day trip, and we'll be back next Sunday. Leave tomorrow morning at ten twenty AM, and I haven't packed yet, so...
We're going to get you out of here. That's a warning to us as we go into executive session. Uh, I too want to thank my fellow board members for, we can't all be at all of the events all of the time, but we've had a nice gathering at each one, and I think it is appreciated by the host campus. And also, I want to publicly thank the Saginaw Chamber of Commerce who invited all of us to, um, an event last night honoring elected officials from across the county at Joties, and, uh, Mr. Carter and Mr. Greenhill and Dr. Morrison went. I was stuck on your campus with Dr. McIntosh. You owe me an enchilada. All right, we are going into closed meeting. Uh, we do, um, anticipate coming out and voting on, um, our goals for the new year, but y'all don't need, we'll, we'll get those to you. You do not need to hang around for it. Also, we will be deliberating real property section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two of the Texas Government Code, personnel matters, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation and discussion of the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-six Texas Government Code, and finally consultation with our attorney on section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one of the Texas Government Code. So, we are adjourned, our next meeting, we will see you on October sixteenth.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
First apologies that you're so late. And then also, I misspoke when I adjourned the meeting. Actually, I should have recessed the previous meeting. So I'm calling the meeting back to order and I would ask for a motion to approve the chancellor's action plans for the new year.
I'd like to make that motion and I will leave it for Mr. Lice to be read to the record.
Second. Questions, discussion?
Second.
Mr. Heath. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Yes.
Our next meeting is October 16th.